I'm gonna kill myself.
You alright?
Yeah, you guys didn't take that down very good.
So you did that on purpose?
What are you supposed to walk around that?
No, I didn't do it either.
That's a long way.
Do you have one?
Ooh, good.
Are you kidding me? Oh, that's on my lucky right now.
Kim went to the bathroom real fast.
What?
You didn't see it?
What? No. Where are you watching it all?
What do you mean she didn't see it? She's been here.
Yeah. Hell no, I couldn't even give them a photo.
Yeah, I mean, they just all back already, but yeah.
No, all I'm doing is watching the score.
Oh, man, there's three interceptions, then Pat threw an interception. Yeah.
My boy. He's getting shit together.
Okay, guys. Two more minutes.
Yeah, they've all been giving me shit all day because of this thing. Keep telling them, I said, "We must start stuffing stuff in places you don't want it stuffed, so you'll always shut up."
Not me.
Not her.
Ms. Donna?
Yeah.
Could you please use your microphone?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Told you, sorry.
And make sure Ken is using hers too.
Okay.
Good evening, I call this meeting to order. Roll call, please, Ms. Donna.
Here we go.
All right. Ms. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Chesney?
Here.
Ms. Kearns?
Here.
Ms. Lanning?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Richmond?
Here.
I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, recognitions. If I could have all members of the board, please come forward.
Good evening. I am excited to announce and share with our Board of Education and our community our Appleseed Prize recipients. And so would those individuals, please come to the front. Danielle Gonzalez, Nicole Adams, Madison Machowski, Rihanna Vlevo, Kaitlyn Poe, Elizabeth Hoskins, Becky Carter, Tommy Violet, Lucy Mize, and Katie Adams. Because it's the Appleseed, of course they needed a caramel apple to go along the way for them. And I want to say, these educators were selected for their innovative projects designed to enhance teaching and learning experiences throughout the St. Joseph School District. Appleseed Grants empower staff to bring creative ideas to life. They foster meaningful and engaging change instructional practices. From this talented group, one educator will be named the 25-26 Innovator of the Year, recognizing exceptional creativity and the impact on student success. I'm so grateful for this team of educators. I'm also grateful for the foundation, thank you.
Okay, audience participation. Chad O'Callahan?
I was streaming this earlier, so if the microphone cuts out, I apologize to everybody. I was at my son's soccer game in Cameron. Unfortunately, I'd lost that game. I had to be there instead of here to make sure that may be my son's last Irish soccer game. I just, I have a question. You guys were posed with a bunch of information. Whose responsibility is it to validate that information? When you come to the numbers and they say, "This is the numbers presented," isn't it your job to validate that information? It's not ours. When a community or anybody presents you with information that, "This is what you need, this is what it takes, this is what you have to have," it's your job to validate that, correct? And now, all of a sudden, after all these years, I get numerous phone calls and messages from family and friends. What do you mean they're shutting down schools? This is pathetic. I would like the cameras focused on you tonight. Because from everybody that I've talked to the entire drive back from Cameron, I always see his faces pacifying us, not engagement. Shame on you. This may be your career, your place to want to hold yourself to a higher standard or promote to something else, but you're not showing it. Dedicate yourself to something that you believe in. A while ago, we said indivisible, cannot divide. I still believe in that. My last name's O'Callahan, I bleed Irish. My family bleeds Irish. We've went to the North End schools forever. I have numerous friends and family that go to the South End and went to school there. Think about what you're doing to the community. It's all I ask. Don't think about yourselves and your careers, because they don't care. Think about the students sitting up there. My daughter went to school at Lafayette after being taken out of private school, and she excelled. Went from an average student to top 10. Getting her degree at Northwest, another green school, for teaching. She has a contract to come back and teach at St. Joe Education, because she went through the Hilliards program and got numerous college credits for it. I'll buy her out of that contract, that this is the way we're going to proceed with our future. Think about that. We can't think about anything else other than their education, their spirit, and what it means for me in 20 years to have a decent doctor or a decent lawyer by having a better education. I don't care about the numbers. You've excelled in the past with lower qualifications and lower dollar amounts. For 20-some years, we fought with the school district, Colgan and everybody else, how poor the school district is, how bad, blah, blah, blah. I've stuck up for you guys for the last several years and been ashamed of adults who haven't voted for improvement. But I'm ashamed of you. I'm ashamed of all of you.
And that's your time, Mr. Callahan.
Thank you.
Okay, members of the board, approval of the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to change 8A to an informational item to provide...
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry, wait, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to revise the agenda to change 8A to an informational item to provide opportunities for discussion and to answer questions and concerns from the board and the public.
I have a motion, is there a second?
What was the motion?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand.
Could you repeat your motion, please?
Sure can.
Because I can't understand her.
The motion is to change 8A to an informational item to provide opportunity for discussion and to answer questions and concerns from the board and the public.
All I got was a motion to change 8A to an informational item.
So 8A is the facilities and district reorganization decision. I would like to change it to an informational item so that we can discuss it in more detail.
I have a motion on the floor, is there a second? I'll second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? If there is no discussion, you can call the vote, Ms. Donna.
Ms. Lanning?
Latonya, I did not hear that motion, what's the motion?
Could you repeat the motion, please, Ms. Donna?
The motion that I have is motion to change 8A to an informational item.
To move 8A to an informational item.
Okay, thank you.
To discuss.
Okay.
Latonya, I guess I don't know the difference. I mean, I see the difference in position on the agenda, but what does that mean? We don't have a vote on the action tonight, or should we have it at the end of the...
If you move it to an informational item, it means everyone will be able to ask questions if you choose, get those answered, and there's not a vote.
And then there won't be a vote.
Because it's an informational item.
So I'll provide some context...
I'm just asking the audience if you could please calm it down so we can do business.
So I'll provide some context. I have had several concerns, which I have communicated. I've had several questions that I've asked that I don't feel like have been answered satisfactorily. And so what I would like to do is for us to take more time. I'm not asking for a considerable amount of time, but I don't think that we have all the answers to make an informed decision. I don't think that we have brought the community along in the decision-making process. I don't think that the process that we currently, where we currently are, has been transparent. And I don't think it's fair that we are at this point to where we're going to make a decision this evening with so many plans that we're deciding. What I would like to see us do is, by way of a discussion, say, okay, of these many, many plans, including Plan E, what do we want to move forward with and what do we want to refine? I don't feel as though we have the information or we've gone through the process that we are prepared to make a quality decision for children. I don't. If everyone else does, that's fine, I'm only one vote, but that's why I've asked to move it from an action item that we would vote on to an informational item.
And the reason why I agreed with you is, over the process, I realized that all of us as a board has never talked about all of these plans and answered question among us. I mean, I know that we were given lots of information and we've heard from lots of people, okay, but the board has never come together collectively and discussed everything as a board, and it makes me nervous to choose a decision of this magnitude and we haven't even discussed it.
I mean...
I'm asking...
We can take a vote and we don't revise the agenda and we take a vote tonight. I'm saying, I don't have the information that I need to be able to say, yes, this is the best option. I don't have it. But if everybody else feels comfortable and ready to make a vote, I'm only one person.
Okay, well, right now, we're only making a decision about the amendment of the agenda. I have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
You know, I'm not categorically opposed to either one. It just seems to me like when we come to an action item like that, we'll have some opportunity for some discussion, and we'll also have the opportunity at that time at the end of the discussion to table that or to take action on it without predetermining that we can't make a decision. And so I don't know, I don't know if there's a compelling reason for me to say that I wouldn't want to discuss it in the action item forum rather than just have it be information. But we can vote, I'm just making a comment.
I appreciate that, Mr. Tom, thank you. Any more discussion? If, Tharona, would you call the vote about the amendment to the agenda?
Mr. Moore?
No.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
No.
Ms. Kearns?
No.
She says yes.
No.
No.
It was no.
Thank you. Mr. Richmond?
No.
Ms. Miller?
No.
Ms. Lanning?
Uh, yes.
And the motion fails 5-2? Consent agenda, is there a motion?
No, you need to approve your agenda.
Okay. Original question, approval of the agenda, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Rhonda, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes 5-2? Consent agenda, is there a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Rhonda, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mike, would you call the vote, please?
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. And the motion passes, all approved? Admin reports? Dr. McGuinness?
I will be speaking to action item 8A, so I will defer...
Thank you, Dr. McGuinness? Kate Nastasia?
Good evening. In October's Assistant Superintendent of Academics and Education Service Report, I wanted to share with the community, I know that our academic department plan from our academic service team listed a proficiency score, but tonight's focus is on ELA. And I wanted to share with you the list of schools and their performance based on the Missouri Assessment Program in English Language Arts, and where they scored in the spring of 2025 and where we know they will score in the spring of 2026. And so, again, I'm thankful for Dr. Reed and Dr. Adams sitting down with each building leader and crafting these goals together and creating action steps that would align to the work that we're leading on the academic service team. Behind that, you will find our action steps in what we lead in instructional frameworks to support all teachers, not just new teachers. And so, one of the things that we wanted to share with you guys are the action steps that are the St. Joseph School District foundational practices. And we focus on really six key drivers, and we discuss them as the learning environment, management, the interaction between peers-to-piers, teacher and student, students building in that community, clarity, opportunities for response, and the intentional learning design. Within that intentional learning design, you will see a breakdown of the St. Joseph School District Literacy Guidelines, and I wanted to showcase those for you. And so you can see the breakdown where we lead in a mini lesson with some student work time, there's a reflection, then we have personalized differentiated small group instruction, and then the reading foundation where we focus on the science of reading. Those total instructional minutes, I've spoke to a lot, but if you look at them, regardless of the elementary classroom that you are a student in, we lead from 135 on the reading side, and you flip over, we wanted to keep writing sacred, and so you will see 40 minutes of writing time with the same instructional framework. These were formed with teachers, they co-constructed this work with us, and so teachers worked, provided feedback to us, and now we're in the midst of the work in the classrooms. I also wanted to share with you guys the instructional framework. We know we don't get that in the secondary world, but the SJSD learning framework for what does literacy instruction look like in our secondary classrooms? And we decided to lead by percent, because some of the numbers were off just a little bit, the number of minutes. You may have somebody that has 45 minutes and somebody that has 50 minutes, but we wanted to set a percent so that way equity could be at that piece. I also attached for your review the kindergarten observation form, and I definitely want to give a shout out to all kindergarten classrooms in leading this work and setting this up. I am so proud of our district right now. We were at one of the highest rates in recording the KEA, and the KEA is on the APR report. And so what we're doing right now in the work will lead to where our APR results would look like in 2026. And so we had an important deadline, and I'm grateful for Dr. Adams and her leadership on this. We only had one student who did take the assessment, it was a Moses ID switch, and so we corrected that, but we were at 99.9% completion rate on that. And so, again, 100%, really, it was Moses ID and we got that corrected right away. I shared that in the weekly report with you as well. But I wanted to share the kindergarten observation form because we are looking at, and Mistavol is an Angie Chavez, who's an instructional coach that serves at our early learning sites, we are specifically looking at that literacy domain, and we're looking at the growth that we're seeing from our students, and I will be so excited to bring that back to you in November when we have our predictive results and our KOF data to support with you. But if you look at the readiness indicator number 14, the readiness indicator 15, if you go backwards, 11 and 13, they all center around those, what we call our students ready to partake in learning at the kindergarten level. Last, I want to leave you with some important dates. You know we're in the midst of parent-teacher conferences, and so October 27 through the 30th are parent-teacher conferences, and I put in the link there for you for the AMI work. We did redesign that work to align to our district resources, and you'll see an updated version of instructional resources. Those packets of classwork for those AMI days are being passed out at parent-teacher conferences, so they're giving a hard copy, and we've already linked this plan, the AMI work for our students, online. Remember, October 31st, Halloween, no school post-conference, and then November 3rd is a professional learning day for our staff. November 26 and 28, there's no school, Thanksgiving break, and then we round out December 5th with teacher evaluation, classroom observation number three. Are there any questions?
I just want to say thank you to the kindergarten teachers, because getting that all accomplished is a huge feat, because you have to figure out how do you entertain other children while you're taking this data, and I just appreciate the fact that they were all able to accomplish that.
Thank you, Ms. Chesney, they're the work of it, they do so much for our students, so I'm grateful for those kindergarten teachers.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duder. Okay, Dr. Hedgecord?
Thank you. In front of you this evening, I have the October budget amendment. In July, when we started calculating our ASBR, which our fiscal year runs again July 1st through June 30th, and we realized that we are at 10.02% operating fund balance, we started with our staff, sorry.
Pull your mic a little closer.
We started working with our staff in regards to budget reduction process, and so I went into detail in the October workshop meeting about the process and how we went through identifying items that were furthest from the classroom, and worked with all the directors, the principals, to look at items that we could reduce for this fiscal year to get closer to a balanced budget. And so what you have on the screen in front of you is the last summary page, and that last summary page shows the areas where we are proposing the budget reductions for this October amendment. And so you can see on the left-hand side of the screen and on your page, the cuts that come from Central Office, which include areas of technology, Board of Education, Human Resources, Special Programs, Superintendent's Office, Communications, Business Office, Health Services, Nutrition, and others, come to a total of over $3.3 million out of this fiscal year, and the percentage that was allocated in total from Central Office. And then on the right-hand side, you have our secondary and elementary schools, and the amounts that were reduced in those areas of supplies, purchase service, classified and certified staff, and then also at the elementary level and what those percentages come to. And then you have the total initial savings, and then we also have some corrections to some budget expense items for curriculum as well as salaries and benefits. So if you go to the second document in that agenda item, you will see that there's some modifications to the values for certified and non-certified salaries. some modifications to the values for certified and non-certified salaries and benefits. And so, the June FY26 budget that's proposed to you was below the areas that we're going to see in those salaries and benefits. So, those changes to those salary and benefits are not any additional staffing or any additional benefits to our staff, it's simply correcting the projections for those salary and benefits. So, I just wanted to point that out as you start seeing what those values are on that second document, just to ensure you that the reason for the change or the amendment is really just to correct those projections, and it's not through any type of additional staffing through the district. So, be happy to answer any questions at this time.
How much was that adjustment? I'm not seeing that.
It was over $9 million. So, your FY26 budget underestimated salaries and benefits by over $9 million.
Yeah.
One of the items that I had taken issue with was...
Could you speak closer?
Yeah, that's actually not a problem. One of the issues that I had taken, one of the expenses that I had asked about in the past that I had taken issue with was, I know we had talked about charitable events and us going to charitable events, I had asked about, I know that we had talked about cutting the Mosaic Ignite event out of board, the board budget, I had asked about the mayor's Thanksgiving dinner, is that still in this budget?
I will have to look exactly for those individual line items.
Could you all keep in mind, you know that it has to be like almost on your lips?
Test, 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 test.
It's not on.
Test, test, test. I can tell you that was cut from the Board of Education budget, we had two tables, one was on Superintendent's Office and one was on Board of Education, we went down to one.
So, I'm just going to share that I know it's a small item, but I think it's a point of concern for me that we would be paying for something that's a charitable event for someone else, that we are using public dollars to pay for the fundraising of someone else when we're in our current situation, so that's one of the things that I take issue with. I'd also like to ask about the budget overage of a million dollars, I had sent some questions about that, that was for the Benchmark purchase, and that was, so we approved that back as an informational item, I think on May 12th. There was a presentation, and in that presentation, we referred to that we had chosen six years for cost savings, but then I had heard somewhere else it was three years for cost saving. What was that initially anticipated to be, six or three?
So, there was a six-year contract, and then there was a six, I'm sorry, a six-year contract and a three-year contract. We also had asked about the one-year contract, the one-year contract was $1,184,610.
Okay, and we had, when we, so you all budget in each department, correct? I'm not as familiar with your process, but each department, each department budgets, does their budget, and this item was budgeted at an installment payment, is that correct?
I was not in those budget meetings, but I can speak to the process. The process is the Business Office meets with every department and then goes through the expenditures for what they're going to have for the year and kind of gives them some guidelines for what we have as far as our revenues coming in to look to balance our budget. And in those discussions, my understanding is that the Business Office had made the assumption that that was, cost was going to be spread over six years, and made that assumption incorrectly. And so, when they budgeted that line item for the FY26 budget, that item was below what it should have been, when it should have been for the full amount that was approved in May.
So, did the, so did the Business Office assume incorrectly? Or did the Academics Department budget incorrectly?
The Business Office assumed incorrectly.
Hold on, you weren't here.
If, we set the priority for it to be the ELA core resource, and so if I'm looking at a budget number of $1,184,610 for one year, I don't know how we would spread that out over three or six years.
But was it, was it budgeted for three or six years?
In the meeting, we were in agreement that the Benchmark advance was going to be purchased to support the academic infrastructure of our K6 classrooms.
Over, but there had to, okay, we're not going to get to an answer, and this is where I feel I get frustrated, because I know there's an answer, I know that there was a budget that was provided, and then we can't remember, or we don't know what happened. So, on 5/12, we get the presentation, in Simboli, we get the invoice, we didn't have the contract, there's reference that it was going to be installment payments. On 5/27, I apologize, I was absent from that meeting, there were no cost questions, and then at some point, it comes out, we discover that there was a budget issue, and when was that, was that August, when was that?
So, once we saw the payment that put the budget over for that budget code, we then started negotiations with Benchmark to talk about how we could spread that over time as the Business Office had made that assumption during those meetings. And when we had those discussions, Benchmark reminded us that we had a large upfront discount for that payment upfront, because a lot of those materials are printed, and so those expenses are upfront to that company, so they also needed the payment to match the terms of the quote that was there in May, because their costs were upfront. So, if we, if they would have agreed to put that over six years like the Business Office had assumed, we would have lost that upfront discount that we received.
Excuse me, Dr. Hedgecoret, I have a question, okay, so, does the Business Office normally make like assumptions, and that's like a strange assumption to make that it will be paid over X amount of years, I mean, I was also under the assumption, because it was not in the budget, and so I guess I'm confused.
I certainly understand why the Board would be confused, because the budget item for that account code didn't have the full amount in there, so I understand that and why, you know, that is frustrating, but a mistake was made, I think it was an honest mistake, that that was going to be paid over a six-year term, and that that wasn't upfront, and so that is something that, you know...
So, I want to clarify, I am not confused, I am not confused. So, what I know happened is that we approved a budget that didn't have this amount in it, I know that we were presented that there would be installment payments, there was nothing in Simboli that talked about how it would be paid, there was just the reference that it would be over time, and I don't, I don't believe that it was only the Business Office, I don't believe that we only knew about this in August. You forget that the people in that Business Office and previous staff have Internet too, they can watch this. And I guess my question is, was there a conversation with Dr. Seegerist that there was a concern about a budget item, or no?
There was no conversation with Dr. Seegerist on the concern about the budget item.
Okay, so we didn't know before he left, we did not know?
No, it was an agreement that we were making this a priority for our academic infrastructure.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, so, my concerns are that we, and I hear what you're saying, that we were going to, we needed to buy this, we bought this, we made a similar SNAPU with the International Teacher Contract to the tune of $300,000 or something to that effect, and the problem is, I hear, I hear what we say when we're like, well, we would have paid for that anyway, and we got a little bit, but it wasn't budgeted. So, now, we've cut $3 million, but we can only realize $2 million, and when mistakes of that magnitude continue to happen, it erodes the trust of the community, and so this pipe dream of going to the community and asking them for more money, when we keep mismanaging their money, I think is, is not, is very unrealistic. So, I also have asked about an audit, I would have preferred an audit to verify their numbers before we approved a budget, we said we were going to get that, we haven't got that, and I'm just going to be honest, I'm not going to vote for this, because I'd like for there to be an audit first.
If I could talk to that a little bit. So, if the Board does not approve this tonight, everything that you see in here is a budget cut, and so, the reason we presented this October budget revision is to reduce the expenditures. So, if the Board doesn't approve it, the account codes in E-Finance Plus, which is our software, financial software program, will continue with the same budget codes that we have for the FY-June 26 budget that was listed. So, in other words, we will continue to have the higher allocations for supplies, purchase services, and everything you see on the left-hand side of that screen if it's not approved. And so, I worry at that point that those items that we have talked about not spending on for FY26 will end up being purchased through miscommunication, mistakes, saying, well, hey, my budget item in E-Fen says this, well, you know, we're hoping to cut that with a budget amendment, so...
And I understand that, and it, but it oftentimes feels like we don't get correct information or accurate information, or there's a mistake made, and then it's said, but we don't have time for you not to make a decision, you need to hurry up and make a decision. And I, for one, am tired of operating that way, and I'm not going to, but I'm only one of seven.
Can I ask you a question, Dr. Hedgecoret? Okay, in looking at the information and listening in the last meeting, I noticed that you mentioned that the error was noticed in August, okay, but the Board was told about it two weeks ago, why is that?
That is correct, so when we called Benchmark and was hoping to get some traction on getting that to be paid over time, like the assumption that was made from the Business Office, and we continued back and forth with those discussions, and until we realized we were to dead end and we'd get nowhere, that's when we notified the Board, because we were hopeful we'd get somewhere with those discussions. And to make those payments like the Business Office had assumed over six years.
I think, I just think in the future, I think this is why it is so imperative that the Superintendent and Board President, and I know, I know we've had issues there, but it is so important that you have a communicative relationship, because we should be brought along, like we should be brought along, like even if it doesn't happen to the full Board, it needs to happen to the Board President or the Board Leadership to say, hey, guys, this is, this is an issue that could be coming up, this could be a problem, and then at least someone knows, and I feel like that is a failure for the past significant period of time, that we're just, we're not brought along to things, and we're not bringing the community along too, and so that communication is something, and making assumptions are things that we need to work on.
Well, I'm brand new, and I'm trying to bring transparency, trying to show where we are financially, where mistakes were made, and if you want to put that on somebody, that's me, I am trying to learn how the Board communicates, what their expectations are of me, and for that, I apologize, but...
And I, I know you're new, I know you're new, and that's not, I realize that the problems that we are dealing with are, in some ways, they're the previous administration, but we have a lot of people that are still here from the previous administration, so I'm only one Board member.
Let me ask a different question.
Sure.
And, because I think we have such a group here tonight, and we're listening to that, and we are talking about a budget crisis, this one doesn't bother me to the same degree it does that we just discussed, but what, the one that I'm curious about is the $9 million misbudgeting of salary and benefits.
Sure.
I mean, that is, you know, we have the federal thing that now has come through, we understand with the capital projects, and we, I believe we've taken corrective action, not to reverse it, but to fix it, but how are we in the position that our salaries and benefits are $9 million over budget?
Yeah, so, had a lot to do with the way we were estimating before, we would pull those numbers out of E-Finance Plus, again, which is our financial accounting software, and do some projections through that, but once you pull data out of a system, that data is not live anymore, and so those projections, as you have employee movement, people retiring, new people coming in on different steps, that data is quickly old and not current. And so, we need to be able to do all of our projections in E-Finance Plus, we've been working hard with our Human Resource Department and our Business Office to make sure all of our position control within E-Finance Plus is accurate and correct, so then that way we can do iterations within that software program, we can look at different things like adding steps for teachers, what it looks like if we add certain amounts to the salary schedule, and look at each iterations of what that might be. So, we've worked hard to clean that up to this date, so when we start having conversations with our salary and benefits committee of what those things would cost based on certain scenarios, which would be called iterations in the software program, and budget much better. And so, you know, that is a process we're going through right now to try to fix those issues that we've had in the past, because the Board needs accurate information to make accurate decisions, and...
So, one quick follow-up question, and thank you, Dr. Hedgecoret, what is, we passed a bond issue, or a levy, or the community agreed to fund increases for teachers, and it's been a little bit confusing to me, is the amount that we collected, or is it a timing thing, or have we exceeded what the bond, what the bond allowed for?
Right, so you're referring to the Prop C waiver.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, I just sort of didn't say it right.
Yeah, the Prop C waiver close to funded what that add was to the salary schedule, it truly was just making inaccurate estimate on what the impact of that was overall, and what was...
So, it wasn't enough to fund what was given for increase?
No, it was, it was, it was enough to fund, but you were already headed on a decline reserve ratio percentage from the previous year of, you know, over $10 million in deficit spending, and so even though that did pay for itself, you, you made, there was no adjustments made to correct that, so then you had another $10 million in deficit spending, which a lot of that also came from the HVAC purchasing of Fund Four that I've talked about before, and once that Fund Four went the negative, we had to transfer money over from Fund One to make sure that Fund Four went the positive, and that drug down our reserve ratio.
Thank you.
Could you also explain about the audit process?
Absolutely, yes, so Linda Quinley will be here November 10th at our Board Workshop, she is continuing to have conversations back and forth, she came on-site a couple weeks ago to have discussions with myself and others in the Business Office and to take data away from the office to investigate, one, how we got in the current financial situation, and two, you know, probably some suggestions of things we can do better in the future. So, we've had good conversation over the last week, and she's dug into things and had different questions of, you know, why were numbers presented this way, you know, and I've answered the best I could from my perspective, especially for this fiscal year, and then she'll be here November 10th to present that information to you, and then you can be happy to ask her any questions at that time when she's here during that meeting.
Okay, I have another question about the process, and so when Linda Quinley comes and looks at the information, if there were like any errors, any issues, she'd let us know about that then?
Yeah, so what she has done is pulled all of our ASBR data for the last five years, and she's also looked at past audit reports, and then also asked questions about different procedures and processes that we do, and our budgeting cycles, how we look at, you know, estimating different expenditures, what type of, you know, variances we have, and what the acceptable amount of variance should be. You know, when you're doing that June budget, you don't know your tax rate, you don't know your enrollment, you don't know your test valuation is going to be, but as your October comes around, you know those things, so, yes, you're going to be more off in June for your variances, but as you have budget amendments along the way in October, February, April, you should be narrowing down to be more precise as you go. And so, that's something with that October budget that I'm trying to show is, you know, we need to be precise with our salary and benefits, and that number that you see that I presented is going to be much more precise with how we're going to end this year.
Because we're in the middle of the process, do you think it'd be easier to wait until after Linda comes?
I, if, if, if you're going to ask me what's fiscally best for the district, I think it's important to approve this budget amendment now, so we can get all the budget amounts updated in E-Finance Plus, so people see that those budget cuts are in place, and that way they know exactly what they can spend for their supplies and purchase service. Because if I was asking you to increase expenses, then I could understand, but all I'm asking here to do is correct the amount we're going to have for salary and benefits based on current staffing, there's been those additional staff members added, and then ask for the $3.7 million in budget reductions that we've done with the team, and then correct the curriculum account code for... account code for benchmark data.
I think that my issue is that I'm kind of leery about everything now, and it's nothing against you. I know that you knew, you know, but there are some major issues, and so, I mean, I'm just kind of leery about everything, and I just like reassurance.
I guess I would just ask you to look at my track record and let that speak for itself.
And at the end of the day, this is a budget reduction. Eighty-seven point eight percent is from central office, and then those cuts would be reflected in our budgets. We need to cut costs, so I don't know why we wouldn't proceed with trimming our budget.
As I mentioned it, I'm not arguing against a reduction. It's, I'm just leery, I'm just leery about our numbers right now. And with everyone in the community watching, normally it's my name that's on the line. And so I'm just nervous about anything until we have outside eyes looking at it to reassure us, you know, that we're actually using accurate information as we move forward.
Does the upcoming audit, uh, help with this?
So KPM, so two parts, you know, if, if you're talking about our official audit, that's from KPM, that will be presented in December, and then Linda is doing her presentation November 10th.
Next month.
At the work session.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure I understand. So, in the meantime, if we don't approve these budget cuts tonight, people who go in and look at what the amount of their budget is could potentially be inaccurate, and they could be making, um, they could be having expenses that will not reflect the budget cuts. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct. So all the numbers in E Finance Plus right now are based on that June preliminary budget that you approved. And so, no numbers are changed until the board approves. Even if we have, you know, agreement from different departments and principals, those numbers cannot be changed until there is board approval.
Let me ask you another question. If we approve this tonight, and we find out in the audit, or as the year goes on, subsequent things that impact the budget, either positively or negatively, do we have other opportunities to adjust the budget to keep it up to date?
So I'll bring you a February budget amendment as well, and one in May or June to finish out the year.
If, if she came back with significant things that affected the budget from the November 13th, would they have the opportunity to have a corrected budget in November?
Absolutely. We could have a second amendment at that time. If she had something on November 10th that you'd wanted to address, I could bring a November budget amendment for that November board meeting.
So I, I'd see very low risk in terms of us approving this tonight, with the idea that we could, if we find out additional information, we can...
Right.
...change that at that time.
Right, and I can understand some weariness of some people. I, I get that with the history, um, but since these are all budget reductions, that's why I'm asking for us to move forward now, so we can make sure we get that in place, because it is gonna take some time. Um, I think this is the, one of the biggest changes we've had between a June and October budget, of making so many changes in our financial system to make sure we update everybody that uses, um, those budget codes to be able to track their budget as they go through the year.
I, I move to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If there's none, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
No.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
For cuts. Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes 5-2. Next.
Let me get back to the agenda here. Um, so the next item that we have, and I just switched to the June budget, one second. Uh, so we have approval bills. Uh, be happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Make a motion to approve the bills.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, would you call the vote, please?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. And the motion passes all approved? Next, Dr. Hedgecorff?
Yeah, so the next thing we have is September financials, and there's something that I wanted to, uh, point out in this financial report. Um, I've changed the way it's organized to help give a little bit better guidance on tracking how we're doing for the year. So in the past, you used to have just, um, Fund One and Two on the first page, and then all the funds listed individually. Well, I feel like you need to see the whole picture about our operating fund. So when you look at our, um, reserve ratio, it is a function of Fund One, Two, Five, and Six. So when you think of Fund Five and Six, don't think of it as a separate fund. It is a sub-fund of Fund One. It is named different and organized differently in our financial situation, so you can track, um, our activities, and then also our healthcare. And so, Five and Six are actually a fun, fun, sub-fund of One, so that way I have One, Two, Five, and Six together, so that way you can see the exact numbers of our operating fund as we track throughout the year to see how we have realized the percent of our budget. So now when you look at that first page, you're gonna see eighteen percent of certified salaries have been realized for this year, where before you didn't have the other funds in there, to be able to see that as a function within our operating fund budget. Because Funds One and Two, Five and Six are our operating fund. You have debt service, which is Fund Three, which can only be paid for debt, and you have Fund Four is capital projects. So we made that change to try to help let you see and track, um, what we've realized for the year. Now, please note that the numbers that you see in there for FY 26 budget are the June FY 26 numbers. They are not the October budget amendment, because that has not been approved yet. So we don't put those new numbers in there for the FY 26 budget until they're approved. So if you do approve the, which was just approved, so next month, you will see those new October budget amendment numbers to then be able to track those percentages much more accurately. So we, we also list those below as well, individualized, so you can see them, um, individually, to make those determinations as you're tracking. So I feel like that will help us as we go through the year, be able to see if we're gonna be over or under budget in our expenses and revenues, and to see how we're tracking. So I just wanted to point out that change as you look at, uh, your September financials.
That's a really good improvement, because we have been, uh, caught off guard in the past where we, we looked like we were tracking okay, but it didn't have the whole picture until it was late in the year.
Right. And then something else I want to point out, certified salaries, um, when we make our June payment, there are two months that are paid there. So when, when we make that final June payment, that, that pretty much is double what you're gonna see in May, because they pay June and July in June. So as we're tracking, if you see ninety-two, ninety-three percent, you're not tracking okay, because you're gonna have that double month payment in the last year. So I just want to point that out as we get closer to June.
So at eight, that's what's gonna be my question. At eighteen percent now, um, that would include the month of August and September? Two months?
Correct.
And so that's nine percent a month?
Correct.
And, um, nine percent a month times twelve is a, a hundred and eight percent?
Right. So, that FY 26 budget, that number is under what it should be, and so I ask, asking us to reflect what those truly will be, um, in that October budget amendment.
Okay. I thought I had you.
Right, so on certified, when you say FY 26, see how it says sixty-one, um, sixty-one point five million dollars. You can see on the October budget amendment that I have asked us to change that to sixty-three point six million dollars.
You know, uh, is it, um, unreasonable to add a column because of that confusion that we had last year with the June payment, to add a, um, target percentage realized budget next to that?
Yeah, so we also have a cash flow document where we take, uh, two previous years, and then put the numbers in before, so it can show when you hit this month, this is pretty much what your target percentage spend would be. So we can definitely put a targeted spend on each of those. Now, it's hard with purchase services and supplies, because most people buy their supplies upfront, and they don't spend it to time, but when you look at salaries and benefits, those are paced out month after month, because, you know, our, our staffing stays pretty consistent, except for a couple moves here and there during the year. And so, especially on the salary and benefits, you know, we can definitely do that. Uh, purchase services and materials, we can put that in there, but that's gonna be a little more looser, depending on if a principal spends their money upfront, or waits till kind of the middle of the year to spend those funds.
I, I think the salaries is the one I'm most interested in, because of that offset that somehow caught us by surprise.
And salary and benefits are seventy-five percent of our expenses, so if there's one, you want to make sure you track correctly.
So, so we had an indicator, you know, we use this as an indicator of are we on track or not?
Right.
And exceptions to not being on track, then we can talk about, but, um, I think that would be, that would help the board know, um, are we tracking like we hopefully were.
Sure. No, I'd be happy to add that. Call him in.
Thank you.
Any other questions on September financials?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If there are none, would you call the vote, please, Ms. Donna?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes all approved? Okay, Mr. Carl?
All right, thank you. The personnel report and supplemental, uh, reports have been submitted for your review. The personnel report is located on assembly, and the supplemental is in your packet at your stations. Nothing major to report on either report. If you don't have any questions, I ask for a motion for approval.
I'd make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If there are none, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six-one. Good, Dr. McGuinness?
Okay, good evening. Thank you all for hanging in there with us. We have been talking about facilities for many years, and many of you probably know that. Back in 2010, we had the PACT Group. Not that long ago, we had Vision Forward. We've gone through so many community engagement processes over the years. On September 4th, the board directed administration to look at two, two high school models, one being a Central Benton model, and one being a Central Lafayette model. We have done that work. We have gone and looked at those numbers, provided the data, answered questions, and provided a recommendation based on that directive. We recommended option 7B. That was the majority of our district administration team. The reason behind that is because we believe that would set us up best for the future to possibly have a new high school in the north, and to have future growth and, and progress in our community. That being said, we honestly just want a plan. Any plan. We would like to move forward, and the board choose any plan, so that we can do that. And I will ask if our team has anything else that they would like to add.
I agree with that.
Then I'm ready to make a motion.
Wait a minute, please.
Mm-hmm.
As you and I were discussing this, you'd asked me if I would give every member of the board an opportunity to speak about the process and their thoughts, and I would like to begin that right now, but you can start.
Okay, I'll be happy to. Um, first of all, I want to thank everyone for coming. Um, I appreciate the passion for our community, and I appreciate the passion for our schools. Um, I've been in St. Joe my whole entire life. Apparently, I've had a very boring life. Um, I, I have been a student at Humboldt Elementary. I have been a parent of children in our district. I've been a teacher in our district. Um, I never in a million years ever dreamed I would be on the Board of Education. That certainly wasn't my life goal, but here I find myself. My, um, entire, um, career has been given to children. My teaching career was to children in title buildings, so I understand when we talk about, uh, children, but I really have, take offense a little bit to the term, um, have-nots, because those children have a lot. They have perseverance, they come to school despite all the things that happened to them at home, and they come to school and they learn despite all of that. Um, I have a heart for those children. I wouldn't change my teaching career for a million dollars. Um, I love this community, and what I want for this community is the best education as a community we can give our children. Our children deserve the very, very best. I, my grandchildren go to Topeka High School. I see, uh, what, what happens there. That particular school district is charging their families $300 for their children to be able to ride a school bus. That's not an option here, nor would I ever ask that. My other children go to Kansas City to school, and so I'm able to see what that school district looks like. I've also been really honored to be able to go to other districts for other things that I do in my educational career, so I've seen lots of different schools. There are lots of things in other schools I really, really want for the children in our community. So here is my hope, as we all sit here tonight, um, with passion for our district. My hope is that it doesn't end tonight. How are we, as a community, wrapping around the most vulnerable children in our community by mentoring them, by volunteering in the schools? How are we doing that? I, I, you know, I really am listening. I've taken notes on every meeting we've had. I've tallied what I hear people saying, because I really do want to listen to this community. I also want to speak to the teachers in our district, because I was one of them. I also know a lot of teachers, and I work with them on a regular basis because of my job at Missouri Western, educating future teachers. And I just want to say to them, "Thank you, thank you, thank you. You take Missouri Western students into your classrooms, and you mentor them, and you support them, and you give them the best opportunity to be the best teacher that they can be, and I want that to continue." It is really, really hard to be in this position when I know so many people in our community, because I've been here the whole time. I want what's best for everybody. When I looked and tried to figure out what in the heck I wanted to do, I looked at everybody saying, "I want my school, I want my school, uh, we want change," but I want it to be somebody else changing. So to, to think that I can please everyone, I can't, and that's not my goal. My goal, and I've thought about this a lot, trust me, I've lost a lot of sleep, and I've lost a lot of meals, because I take this very serious, as do lots of other people on our board. But what I want for our community is what is best for our children, and I am willing to do what is best. I am willing to listen, but here's what I have to have in return. I have to have a community that continues to support our children like you have the three meetings that we've had. I want to see our community really embracing those neighborhood schools and going in and doing all the volunteer stuff that you have to do, the background check and all that, because sometimes it's not easy to be, be able to be a volunteer, but that's what I'm begging from you. I want the, the 200 children that are still sitting on an early childhood waiting list, that only have one opportunity, birth to five, to have their permanent brain development for the rest of their life. I want those children to be able to have a place to go, so that they can start their learning out and be successful right out of the chute as they continue their education career. So I'm, I'm thinking about, we gotta figure out how we can make that happen for all the children. I, and I am a Lafayette grad. I bleed green. I understand where you're coming from. I have one daughter who went to Central, I have another daughter who went to Benton, so I've experienced all three schools, and the last thing I want is to lose the schools in our community. That is the very last thing, because that is hard, and I truly understand. Thank you, students, for being willing to come. Thank you for sticking around instead of just leaving. I appreciate that in you. So with, and I think, um, I just really do love our community and love our schools, and I, and I, I really want you to know that we have administrative people that have also come up through the ranks of our school district, who have worked and worked and worked to be able to create the plans they're, they're creating based on what we've asked as a board, And I can genuinely tell you, they also have a heart for children. Nobody on this board and nobody on our administration team sought out to do something that was going to be harmful to children because we just don't operate that way. So I appreciate you coming, I appreciate you sticking it out as we continue to have our conversation. And we will make a decision tonight because I and my right mind cannot make you wait any longer. That is not fair to anyone. Uncertainty is worse sometimes than figuring out what the end result is going to be, so we will be making a decision tonight.
Thank you, Rhonda, Mr. Mike.
Thank you, Madam President. I can echo a lot of those sentiments, although I've never been a teacher. You know, listen, here's, you know, for 10 years, I've been an unapologetic fan of trying to build a new high school in St. Joe for the purpose of drawing families and kids to this community. But I, my intent in life is not to close an existing school, but I'll tell you what keeps me up at night, I'll tell you what I'm scared of. We're really here for two reasons. The outward one is the financial situation we find ourselves in. And the primary driver of that financial situation is shrinking enrollment. And so if you go back to 1991 to now, it's a significant, significant drop. And we've adjusted along the way, but about 2017, 2018, it was mentioned, we've really gone down. Even with our current model with three schools, enrollment continues to drop. Now, the reason that's important to me is twofold. First of all, districts around us, from North Kansas City to Savannah, are growing. They will have the ability to pay their teachers and staff more than us. And so I think the recruiting and retention challenge for the district is going to get tougher. The second thing is, financial instability is a primary trigger for DESI and the state to come in and essentially take over our district. Now, I know many among you said that that would be a positive thing. I assure you it wouldn't. If you think you have lack of influence now, it would be worse when the state came in, trust me. So those are the things that keep me up at night. Let me give you a bottom line, there are things about both plans, Benton Central, Central Lafayette, there are things to like about each plan. No question. For me personally, the Central Lafayette plan offers the best financials. In addition to the financials, it offers a $380,000 advantage in improvements to buildings retained since 2018. Let me explain myself there. So if you go back and look at all the money we've socked into our buildings all over the district since 2018, the plan that would use Central and Lafayette as high schools and the feeder system below it allow us to keep using $380,000 of invested money, okay? Although I know the whole district is impacted, if you look at direct impact and movement, staff and students, it's lower with Central and Lafayette. I also have talked to teachers and I think they have a good chance of being a better classroom experience, larger classroom sizes, bigger hallways. I like the fact everyone's in the same building. And, you know, it honors what the board indicated that we were going to do at the last bond, should that bond fail, which it did. And let me say this. The idea that we could use Benton and Hyde came after that bond failed and I'm glad we looked at it. I'm glad we looked at it, it was the right thing to do. So I do take some issue with the fact we are going back on our word. We took a look at a plan that we thought might have some feasibility and might be best for the community. All that said, I think Central Lafayette's the best way to go. I don't know that any other plan will get us there financially. We risk retention of staff, we risk DESI takeover. And I want to give you, I've heard all this feedback, the most impactful to me has been from staff who have told me, please make a decision, get us out of this limbo, pick a direction and let's go. My personal favorite is Central and Lafayette, but I'm a part of this board and I'm willing to do the very best we can. I yield the floor, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Mr. Tom?
Yeah, thank you and thank you for being here, I appreciate that and I realize this is an enduring time. If anybody has a chief score update, I'd be glad to take that at this point. I'll tell you what, this has been something I think everybody's emphasized, there's probably nothing more important going on in our community and I'm not a part of this because I'm important. I'm a part of this because it's important to our community and I want to do whatever I can to be helpful to the community. And that, that's every single person in here, that's the students and that's the adults, that's our community. You know, one of the things I've said is there's no greater responsibility that a community has than to educate their children. Everybody with me on that, there's no greater responsibility than to provide education that doesn't put our kids behind, but instead allows them to achieve and pursue their dreams going forward. And that's what my goal is, my goal is that we are able to do that. I've looked at these plans, I'm one who initiated saying, hey, we need to look at the Benton-Central idea because of geographics in our community, south and north, and anticipate what are we doing going forward? What positions us best for long-term success? And so I unashamedly said, I think that's something we really need to look at. And that's not aimed or offense to anyone. It's saying that it seemed like geographically that was a logical thing to do. But as this has progressed, what I've heard, and I've heard loud and clear and I hear again tonight, it's not influenced me only from tonight, but I've heard it every listening session and as I've considered myself, not just the ramifications at the high school, we're not making a decision just about what's happening at the high schools, we're making a decision about what's happening at the middle schools, what's happening at the elementary schools. And as I take a look at that and the impact of that, I recognize that most parents in here and even the students have made a decision during their life of where do they want to go to school? Where do they intend to go to school? And it's a primary decision in a family, it was a primary decision for us when our children was young. We moved to Virginia for a period of time and it was the number one criteria that we used for where we were going to buy a house. The number one criteria wasn't the house, it was where we're going to buy our house so we want what's best for our children. And for most adults in here, the biggest significant expenditure of asset you do is what do I do, where am I going to live and what's going to be best for our family? Where am I going to live and what's going to be best for my family? And you do that based on the decisions and the things that are around you and we all know those can change. They all know that those can become different over a period of time. But tonight, what I've heard here and what I've come to this meeting thinking is that while we need to take steps, and nobody's more probably interested in the finances than I am and the integrity of our district, while we need to take steps, that the steps for either Plan Two or Plan Seven are two biggest steps for us to digest in one bite. And so, and I'm not looking for that, I'm not looking for you guys to necessarily agree with me, I'm just telling you my thing, so don't embarrass me, I'm not doing it to, I'm doing it because my determination is the best thing for our district, the best thing for our elementary, middle school and high school is some part built around Plan E. And some variation of that. And Jeff and others who've developed it said, no. Jeff and others who have developed that, I take no right of ownership of that. I'm telling you, if I did something right or wrong, but those that have brought that forward, it doesn't bother me that somebody else has brought that plan forward and has also, in my opinion, humbly said it needs to be refined. It says, that's just a rough draft, that's a draft, that doesn't have every detail of information. It's a draft, but it puts in place the things that I've heard you all say is important, they're important to me, is that Bessie Ellison, Eugene Field, Pershing, those schools that are doing well are able to continue. That's really important to me. And so, I'm, it's, these are, these are super difficult things for me to say. And I, I've pored over these because I guarantee you and I continue to probably not demonstrate that, but I am confident about the administrative team here. And my number one thing I tell Dr. Stewart all the time is, what are we doing about academics? What's going on, what are we doing about facilities? What are we doing about academics? Because it is about the children. The children can learn anywhere, but we need to give our community, and here's what I'm challenging our community, if we can have the courage to keep three schools, then what I'm challenging us to say, are we willing, and this you could say yes to, are we willing to step up and support that decision financially? Are we willing to say, let's not just, let's not just complain about our schools, but let's take pride in our schools, let's invest in that change. Is it going to cost a little bit more money to catch that up faster than another plan would? Let's be ready to step forward and say, yes, yes, let's do that for our community. That's what I want you to think about.
Thank you, Mr. Tom, Ms. Lanning?
So I'm going to be real honest, I'm running on one hour of sleep and a lot of coffee and I'm real frustrated. I, it bothers me that we've gotten to this point and all we get as far as a recommendation is just do something. I think to just do something is not specific enough. Like, do something to who? I don't know what that means. I've answered, I believe it's 117 emails in the last two days. I've been very honest with my concerns. I, spoiler alert, I agree with Mr. Richmond to an extent. For me, there are too many unanswered questions and unaddressed concerns. Basic questions regarding 7B, disparities in both plans. But I'll tell you, what concerns me the most is our, what I feel like is really irresponsible financial management. I ran for this school board because I was frustrated and I was upset to many of the points that you all have shared tonight. To think that we are considering, you know, we closed Lake, we opened as an early learning center, we are going to repurpose it again, or at least that's one of the plans. We asked the community to give us money through a no-tax increase bond issue a year and a half ago, we take that money, we upgrade the HVAC at Eugene Field and then here we are like a year later talking about closing it. That's not fiscally responsible and 7B is not a fiscally responsible decision. Same thing with Webster. We were sold a bill of goods to say, we need Webster, Webster will work, we're going to put money in it, we're going to make it work and then, what, two, three years later, we're like, oh, that didn't work, forget about the money that we put into it? Like, we have got to be better financially with taxpayers' dollars. So to think that we are in any way, that these decisions are in any way talking about building a new high school when we can't manage the funds that we have properly, I think is disrespectful to the taxpayer and I won't support that. I feel like this entire process has been, you know, I agree, we've talked about this for 10, 15, 20 years, but these plans have not existed more than 60, 90 days. So I don't feel like the process has instilled a sense of trust or confidence. And I do agree that if we don't start being more responsible and more transparent and more communicative with the community, they will vote for a new school, but they will vote with their feet by leaving this district to go to other schools. I also agree with some of the things that Mr. Leake has said over the last couple of weeks and the group that he's talked to is that whenever we want to do something, we'll find the data and the reasoning to support that decision and then we'll go back on it. And we're essentially all over the place, so there's just not consistency. And I think we desperately need that. We heard that this whole process has been driven by dire financial straits and I'll remind everyone, those are financial straits that we caused. So it seems silly to even use that as an excuse. It also seems silly to me that we are talking about how we have to make a decision tonight, we have to make a decision because of the finances, but we're considering a plan that doesn't even address the finances. I don't understand that. And so I'm not going to pick one of these plans over the other just because it's not as bad as the other. To me, our students and our staff deserve better than that and I appreciate you, Mr. Jones, so much. I've always appreciated your input, but it is not fair to continually ask the staff to bear the burden of making plans work because of the mistakes of the leadership of this district. That is not fair. I yield the floor.
Okay, Ms. Lanning, thank you. Ms. Kearns?
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone, even though I can't see everybody. I'm sorry I can't be there today in person tonight and I wish I could for this discussion because this decision is probably one of the most important decisions our district's had to face in a long time. I want to thank everyone who's taken the time to be part of this process through the emails, the messages, town hall hearings and meetings. Your voices do matter. The fact that so many of you have shown up and spoken out shows how deeply this community cares for our students and our schools and our future. So it's important for me to be completely honest in about where I stand and I want to share tonight simply my perspective and the opinion of just one board member and I know not everyone's going to agree with me and that's okay because if we did agree on everything, I worry we're not thinking hard enough. So I want first to thank the administration. It's been a big change for them and they have had not an easy task and they stepped in, identified problems they needed to be addressed and they have been open and transparent about the challenges we're facing and that's not easy work. But I'm thankful they brought these issues forward before it was too late. Sometimes we have to face the hard truths before real progress can be given. And as difficult as this progress has been, I truly believe good will come from it. So my perspective on the plans, when we looked at Plan Two, if you're looking for immediate financial impact, Plan Two may make the most sense in short term. But for me, I think it's a temporary fix, kind of a Band-Aid and it won't stop the long-term decline. If we're looking towards the future, maybe Plan Seven is stronger and more forward-thinking option. And personally, if those were the only two I picked from, I would probably pick Plan Seven. But when I was elected, people often asked me, they asked me, do you support two high schools or do you support three? And my answer has always been the same, it doesn't really matter what I want. It varies what's best for the community and what's for our students. And as a taxpayer, I support every bond this district has put forward. But as an elected board member, my role is different. I'm here to represent all of you, the students, the teachers, the staff, the families, all who makes up the district, I am representing the community. So this is not about my personal agenda or what I want, it's about what's doing what's right for the people we serve. Over the past several weeks, I have listened carefully and intentionally. I've heard those from support of Plan Seven and I've heard those from those who support Plan Two, sorry. Both sides are passionate, both Both sides are passionate, both care deeply about our schools. But I also, I've heard most loudly and most clearly, is that the majority of the people in the community support change, but they are asking for a compromise. It's not just one side of the town saying this, it's every side. It's the people who are for two and who are for three high schools, it's the parents, the teachers, the staff, business owners, students, everyone across the city. They're coming together and they say, we need change, but we need the right kind of change. They're asking us to listen, to meet in the middle, and to make a plan that brings the community together and not tears us apart. My biggest concern right now is the sunset levy that's approaching. That levy is absolutely vital to our district's future. If it doesn't pass, the financial consequences could be devastating. And we can pick a plan we want, but if our taxpayers don't feel heard, if they don't believe we're listening, we risk losing the support we need to survive. We have to rebuild trust, we have to show our community that their voices truly matter, and that we aren't just hearing them, but listening to them. Because if we lose the trust of our community and no plan, no matter how well-designed, we'll succeed. I want to see our district grow, and I want us to build new high schools someday. I want our students to have the best facilities and the best opportunities possible, but we must be realistic about how we're gonna get there. Progress only works when the people we serve believe in the path we're taking. So here's where I stand. I believe we must have changed, but I don't believe this particular plan, at least as it stands today, is the right kind of change. I believe we can move forward with the community plan, make smart financial adjustments, and protect our students and our neighborhoods without disrupting the whole district all at once. And if the board is open to it, then I would support that, with modifications for savings and sustainability. But I wanna be clear. I am for change, I am for this administration, but I also have to follow my heart and my responsibility into this community. I was elected to represent the people who don't get a direct vote on this decision, and because of that, I have to be their voice in this room. My hope tonight is our community sees that we are listening, and that we value your voices, and that we need your continued support as we move forward. Change is never easy, not everyone will agree with every decision we make, but if we stay divided, we will all lose. We have to come together as a district, as a community, and as people who want the same thing, a strong, thriving school district with every student that has the opportunity to succeed. Our students are watching us, they're learning not just from what we teach in the classroom, but from what we handle moments like this, how we listen, how we compromise, and how we lead with respect and unity. So tonight and every day moving forward, I do stand for our students, I stand for our teachers, and I stand for this community. Because in the end, that's who we care to serve.
Thank you, Ms. Kearns. Ms. Miller?
Thank you so much for coming, for spending your time for four hours to sit and wait. Thank you for caring enough about your schools, your staff, your families, to be here. It's stunning to me. I'm not very often at a loss for words, but this is impressive, and I appreciate it. But I also, I also find it difficult to put my thoughts into words. I'm in the schools, I attend your events, I help in the cafeterias, in particular Ellison is a chosen school of mine. In fact, so much that when they were short on help in there, they emailed me to come and substitute. What a privilege. So it's a privilege to serve in the community, you, because that's why we're here. I have to praise this administration because they've only done what we have asked. They've done a lot of work, extra, above, weekends, evenings, to try to figure out how this works. And yeah, I know all of you, some of you may work two or three jobs and think, well, big deal. I get that. But they have done, every time they've brought us something, we've asked for more, or less, or other. So they have done what we have asked them to do. So it's kind of a bummer to know that, wow. And I don't blame you, Dr. McGinnis, to say, a plan, they want to work with you, they want to work to improve our schools, they want to make this budget that we're in the hole work for you, for this district. So, Mr. Leek, I appreciate today what you have brought to us in sample form. An alternative, perhaps, but something that we can chew on for a bit and try to figure out if it's workable with our budget, with our staff, the staff that we have, to make sure it's a doable thing, that our district will survive with that. So I very much appreciate it, and I appreciate it that it comes from a community who loves their schools. But it's still hard. It's still hard. Change, yes, I'm not as eloquent as Ms. Kearns. Change is a pain. It is coming. So however it goes tonight, understand that we love you, we are invested in you, truly we are. You may not think so, but we are. This is a volunteer job, and we spend a lot of sleepless nights wondering how we're going to serve you in this capacity, making it work, keeping all of you in places that you want to stay. So yes, Lafayette, Mike, does make sense for the short term. It works with our budget, but that's it for the short term, because sooner or later, we're going to have to change that. Benton, there's some great ideas with Benton, with different opportunities there, and it gives us open doors for a longer-range plan. But as a community, what you have said to us, for those of you who have shown up, not the ones who have stayed home, who haven't had input, but for you who have shown up, you want them all. So my question of you, along with Ms. Chesney, will you come alongside and see this gets done? We need you, we need help in figuring out, if we're going to keep these three high schools, how that's going to work with our budget, with the loss of staff. We will need you to walk it with us, to have input. Now, I'm not, I don't like being bullied or flipped off when you're making a point, so that's not what's confirming to me that perhaps three schools is an appropriate plan. So that has nothing to do with it, I can overlook that. But I don't hear you when you do that, just as if you wouldn't hear me if I don't speak your language. So it's not because you come in and you demand your way, but it's because you come in with a passion, a passion for the schools that you attend, that you serve in. That's what changes the barometer for me, not the ugly. So my question is to our admin, can we work it? Can we make this work? Can we do a job because the community is asking us to do that? For those of you who have shown up, I walk alongside you, Mr. Richmond, because, because of that, because of that passion and the interest you've shown. If we can make that three-school plan fit, make it work, keep everything that you have asked for, I'm in on that. If we can do that... But it takes more than your lip service, it takes more than you coming to a microphone to tell us that that's your desire. They don't need to call me or email me to come help in the cafeteria at one of the schools. We need to fix that. But it takes the community. It takes all of us. So if you've been here, which is many of your faces I have never seen at events before, those of you who are on athletic, in the sports, I've seen all of you, and I love that. But those of you, if this is, I gotta have more than the podium. Come on, get alongside us, invest, invest all of yourself, not just your words, in this community. We are, everyone at these tables is invested in this community. We love you, that's why we're here. So come alongside, let's develop those things that will work, and work with our teachers who are exhausted in limbo. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
I'll be kind of brief, I already knew how I was gonna vote. Because the thing about it is, it's not my vote, it's not my voice, it's yours, and you already told me a long time ago. I'm more of a kid person, I'm not really an adult person, you know, but the adults are the ones who elected us. If there's ever a problem that I have, if there's ever, like, an issue, I look at the kids, and I listen to the children of the community. And I listen to the kids, and they said, we're begging you. Please, would you think about us? Please, would you fix us? Can you please help us? All of us matter, we're more than just numbers. And the thing about it is, as a board, it's not, it's not our, it's not our jobs to figure out how to make it work. Our job is to choose a plan, give this over to the admin, and the admin make it work. And as I was listening to the adults, everyone's like, our community isn't like other communities, our community's completely opposite, it's not like Casey, it's not like this, it's ours. And you guys are right, and it's not my job to change your community. I'm not gonna do that, I'm not gonna be the one to close your schools. There's no way I'm doing that. And when you look at the numbers, I'll be honest, it makes sense. It makes lots of sense. Okay, but the thing about it is, another plan to keep open to all the schools has to make sense too, and I believe our admin will be able to do that. And I know you guys are tired. Is there a motion on the floor?
I make the motion that we accept Plan E with mo... Hold on, hold on. So everybody hears all I have to say, okay, thank you. That we accept Plan E, looking at it more deeply with the needed modifications, also keeping in mind, it does ask for a couple of school closures too. We don't wanna forget that part of the plan. I know that's a whole lot, so I just want all that to be said, but I do wanna listen to the community, I think they've spoken loud, my tally marks as people were talking showed that. So I wanna make a motion that we accept Plan E with modifications that will meet our financial responsibility and the needs of our community.
I have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I second that. Did somebody else already do it?
It's okay, I already beat you. I have a motion to second.
So I'm gonna...
Any discussion?
So I'm gonna vote no, but I wanna explain why I'm gonna vote no. Because I, we haven't, I don't really know what Plan E says, as far as, we haven't had a presentation over it, we haven't dissected it. I'm not saying that I don't want Plan E, I'm just saying I'm not gonna vote specifically for one plan, if that makes sense. I would like to see administration address this plan, but I don't know if per our policy FC, if we say we want Plan E, that that, I don't know. You know what I'm saying? So I'm gonna vote no, but that's why, because I want more information, and I don't know that it fits the policy of FC, so.
And I wanna make a comment, I'm glad Rhonda said that, because there's things, and that group has been open, it transfers tonight if we adopt that to our plan, and it's a community plan. But I would authorize the administration to take the lead in terms of making the modifications that are required to do that. I'm not trying to take their expertise and authority completely away from them, I'm telling you that the framework of the plan, including the three high schools and figuring out how do we create another early learning center, those things, and I think probably Whitney's got right, I mean, only reasonable probably to say, come back and we present that plan, so we all know what's going on with it. But they're charged with running and leading this district, and I wanna make sure we give them the leash to do that.
Okay, so question, I have a question. Okay, so I think, I think an issue in the process is we did this kind of backwards. We're like, okay, you guys get some ideas, give it to the board to approve, and then they did that, and we're like, no, we don't like that. I think it would be easier on the administration in order to know what the board is looking for and what the board wants, to be able to look at Plan E as like a framework, and the board is like, okay, well, I want another early learning center, I want to close Open and Rome, I want XYZ, I want you to look at the boundaries. Because the problem is, if we're just giving it over to admin, and admin's like, I don't know what you want, and so we're just going to get a plan, in a month or two, we're gonna be in the same thing, and I know I don't wanna do this again, so I know no one else wants to as well, and so I think that the board needs to do the job, you know, that the board is elected to do, to guide our admin into getting us information about the plan, you know, that we want.
Yeah, Madam President, I would just add that I think my ask would be that we really delve deep into the financials, you know, I wanna know that this is going to work, you know, keep our teacher salaries competitive, keep Desi from knocking at our door, get our financials back to 20%, and for me personally, this is just a me goal, but like, what would the ask have to be? And Mr. Richmond mentioned maybe a tax ask, but what would it need to be so that we march towards a 20% reserve target by 2030?
A tax ask when? Like, April? No, don't answer that. Do not answer, no.
I don't know when, I guess I would lean on them to tell us. Like, if we say, hey, we really need to be on track to be back to 20% reserves by 2030, what does that look like? Amount of ask and timing?
But yes, I'm thinking that, I'm thinking that we bring this, we have this prepared, I mean, I'm thinking we approve it, and we final approve it, and I know everyone wants it tonight, but we final approve it in November is my suggestion. We have a work session and give them the pieces of it. We have a work session and, and give them the pieces of information. We final do it in November to put the finishing touches on what that is. But I'm, I'm saying that if there's a funding shortfall, that we, we've got an indication of community support, we've got an indication of, we've listened to the community, and it's time for us to move to get, forward together. And I'm thinking that we do an analysis on a tax, a tax adjustment that would happen in, in April.
So my, my only concern is, I don't think that, and, and this is essentially what I have hoped for, is that we would narrow down as we go. And again, the reason, remind us later. So I don't know that it's realistic to go from this meeting to a work session to a vote. I think, I think you're missing a piece there. Because I feel like we haven't had time to talk about, "What do you like about that plan or what do you not like about that plan?" I think a big concern for me is a third early learning center, because we do have kids from the farthest north of, of town, traveling all the way down to Lake. We changed those boundaries last year. So I, I just, I don't know, I don't know that we would have the time. What, what I would like to be able to see is, we have a conversation, we have a discussion, have a special meeting sometime, whether that's before or after, have a special meeting, have another meeting where we say, "Okay, we think this is good. We, we think this is good. We've answered all our questions. We've asked all our questions." The community knows, nothing's changing. Nothing's changing. This is what's going on the agenda. No surprises, no what happened to that fund balance, what happened to that boundary. You go from work session to, to approval with no changes. The other thing that I would request is, um, some sort of information put on the website. We've done that on a lot of other topics and decisions that we've made. We've had a landing page on the website that says, "Here's all the information." I know I had a lot of people asking me, "Where do I find this? Where do I find that?" And I had to just show them the meeting agendas. So I think that was difficult for people. But I think if we can be really transparent and put in the time, I mean, what's the difference between five hours tonight and a two hour, two hour and a board meeting?
I agree with that. I think it might take an extra session too. I agree with Whitney. And I, and I agree with the fact that by, by the work session, we'd, we'd have the final plan presented, and then, then we'd vote on it at the board.
I, I have a question, and I think maybe it's for you, Dr. McGinnis. Could you please address, cause I know we, we already had you do something for Plan E. Could you refresh our memory and give us the information that you've already worked on, that you worked on prior to our town hall last Tuesday?
So we came up with the impact analysis per Board Policy FC. So I don't think you would have to have another hearing. We can confirm that with legal, but I think you would be fine to go ahead and proceed. Of course, I think it would be great to have another public participation so that there's eyes on that and you know that they have that stamp of approval on it also. We have collected some of that data as far as enrollment projections, our current enrollment, the feeder system. I'm happy to work with Mr. Leek and fine tune that to a long-term plan. Just would like direction though, if, if you're thinking this is going to happen next year or the following year.
Well, I, I think that goes back to the financial analysis of it. I mean, that, that was what was so discouraging to me is that we're talking about, you know, if we don't do this, we're gonna perish. And then we had a plan that said, "Maybe we're not." So I, I, that's what I would like to see. And I, I really think that with a meeting to ask questions and get answers and then give more direction, we can perfect any plan that we have. We can't keep going, you know, we can't keep veering completely off the road. But if this is where we're gonna go, we finalize it over in two meetings and then approve.
And Dr. Hedgecorth, he spoke to the financial piece at the last meeting that we had.
Yes. I think that it's my goal, I think it's all of our goals to end the conversation of, "Are we going to close a school?" I think that the board needs to be of a consensus, we're going to really look at the model, change the model in order to make it work. Cause the problem is, in all of these years, we've never done that before. I think it's our time now. I know you're thinking something, Mr. Moore.
I am. I'm just thinking, uh, what the plan, it does have school closures on it.
I realize that.
Yeah, and I don't think we can nor, ignore that part of it, because those school closures, from just my brief look at, uh, the plan would be Hyde, Bodie, and Webster are what's listed on that plan. And I'm not sure, I would have to have more conversation, but I'm not sure how, where those children go, exactly how that's divided, so that we're not any kind of a mathematical issue again. So I just want everyone to, to know that, that we would still need to have that consideration with this plan as well.
Well, and can we, can have like a brief discussion? So one of the things that I was, have been wondering is, we have other buildings that have been costly to maintain. We've had the warehouse, we've had the building on South Ninth. You know, we have programming in Keetley. I guess I would like to, not that I have to see it in a plan, but I'd at least like to know, "Hey, we considered," you know, I, I think at one point we had talked about using Bessie Ellison for, for maintenance or, and I'm not saying what should happen where, but I think considerations of, those are, those are facilities that we have to maintain financially as well. So I think they should be a part of the conversation of, of, "Do we keep them? Do we retire them?" And those aren't educational, those aren't educational settings. It's gonna be a lot easier to maneuver.
Okay, so guys, it's a motion and a second on the floor. What are we doing? Everybody's waiting.
Can I get the motion again to, to understand what we're doing here?
Motion to accept Plan E, looking more in-depth with modifications that are financially responsible.
And we feel like that doesn't, and Dr. McGinnis, you mentioned that you feel like that doesn't have any problems with FC.
With what?
FC, Policy FC.
I'm sorry, were you asking me a question?
Never mind. It's all right. Go ahead.
Policy FC, like, like this ask, does it align with Policy FC?
Yes, we went over the impact analysis information last week.
And with the motion and a second, it's our plan to schedule a special meeting in order to discuss all of the details all of us are interested in, in order to work out a game plan, correct?
Yeah, I suggest a week from tonight.
Hold on.
Well, is that gonna be-
Just getting the consensus real quick.
Yeah, like is that, my thing is like, is that gonna be enough time? And I, I get it. I'm sure if I was admin, I'd be pretty aggravated right now. But nonetheless, I don't know if that, if, if we need to do something where the work session gets pushed, like if we need to do in two weeks and then in three weeks and then, I don't have my calendar in front of me, so I don't know.
Well, that, I'm glad to start, speak to the calendar. The, uh, so next week would be the fourth, well, I don't know it either. I take that. What is it?
November 10th is the workshop?
Yeah, so it'd be the third. We have the third, 10th, 17th, and 24th. The 24th would be the board meeting. So, you know, all I'm saying is, we have the quote brainstorming time where we're further finalizing what we want the plan to look like in a week. And then we, and that they work on, we give them feedback in the meantime. There's some draft of it. They finalize it then for the work session. We can decide after that meeting, do we need to move the work session back? But they, they finalize it and then we vote on it November 24th.
Are you guys able to do a meeting in a week? Is that enough time? Wait a minute, there's no school Monday.
Cause we could also do, we could also do the 10th and the 17th, 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 24th. I don't know if that's like more-
Can we just do it on the 10th? Cause we're meeting anyway and then it would give admin more time to get more information?
So we would tentatively plan on 10th, 17th, 24th.
Right.
Are you guys okay with that? Are you guys okay with that, Kim Kearns?
Of November.
Yes.
Jennifer, you okay with that?
I'm going to, I may have guests coming in.
Admin? Tell me that, Kim Kearns.
10th, 17th, 24th.
Yes.
So I just wanna make sure I understand correctly then, we would consider the 10th a special meeting and the 17th the work session, and then the 24th? Or I guess I'm confused, I mean, I can, I understand the three dates. Okay, so we keep the 10th still the work session?
The 17th would essentially-
Keep the 10th as the work session and then the week later it'll be a special meeting.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I have that right in my head.
And what, what meeting would the public be able to give feedback?
All of them. I mean, except for the work session if you kept the work session.
So then with the 17th-
Not on the 10th, okay, but the other two.
The special meeting on the 17th be the vote for this final plan?
24th.
24th. So what's the 17th for?
By the 10th, I think what we've talked about is to give the administration time to put a plan together on the 10th. On the 10th, we can provide feedback and say, "Yes, you're on the right track. No, you're on the, not on the right track." Buy a consensus. Then on the 10th, if we're like, "No, we're good to go," then we can just go to the 24th. If we're not, we can go to the 17th. Or we have a work session and then the 17th becomes, cause I would think you, if you've changed Plan E, you need to do another FC, you need to do another public hearing, because you've changed things.
Well, exactly. And then I, and then I'm just afraid of us, of us looking at the information on the 10th and then at the meeting on like a vote, it's like a different plan. Like let's go to the 10th, choose everything, and then if we need another week in order to look at the complete plan, get that extra meeting in a week later, okay? But if not, then we have a vote on the plan and then everybody knows all month long, here's what we're looking at and then everybody will, it's just extra time in order to take the will of the people, get it organized, arrange it a little bit, and then get it finalized. Are we good with that?
So Latonya, you're referring to the community has a month's worth of time as well.
And the board and the admin. Yes, ma'am.
And I think Ashley asked, would we be preparing this for next fall? And I think if we go through this, we get a good plan, it, it saves the right amount of money, we have an ask. I think the answer would be yes, right?
Move closer to the mic, please.
Yep, sorry, guys. Yeah, so, so we, we, this puts us on track to be able to execute this. If it's a good financial, community-supported plan, it puts us on track to be able to execute next fall?
Yes.
It's our wish. And the thing is, I'm not trying to come back on the 10th and there's a plan E1 or E3. No, let's get this plan and let's make it like a better plan, you know what I'm saying?
And can we, and I know we had, and I have not compared then, but I know that Ms. Hoskins had emailed, Ms. Hoskins had emailed a plan that was very, very similar. I don't, I don't know, I didn't put them next to each other. So I would just say, "Look, consider that and," I don't, I don't know what the changes are.
It'll be a good opportunity to look at everything, okay? But if we're able, it's a motion and a second. If we're able to take a vote, it will let the community know, you know, that we are committed and we listened, and we're doing what the community wants us to do. I have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes, all approved. Okay, action 8B.
Hey, thank you, guys. Thanks for coming.
I appreciate your time. I'll give everybody a minute to clear out. I know it's a school night. Ariana, are you taking your sister home? Take your sister home for me, please.
Thank you.
Anyone need a break or are we good to go? Members of the board, anybody need a little bit, a little break or are we good to go?
No, no, cause we'll be here forever.
We're good? Okay, 8B.
Nastasia. Thank you. This afternoon, I had the privilege to be at Hosea and their comprehensive work and looking at instruction. I presented this information to you at the work session. Tonight, I'm presenting Hosea's, um, plan for their CLSD grant. The grant was awarded to them by the state, thanks to Dr. Adams. She's up there. In their work, they hope to lead, um, and I've shared this before, in classroom supports. And so they would really love professional consultants and learners to come in and model the new resource. And so what I'm presenting to you tonight is funded entirely through this grant. And you had the invoice attached. Are there any questions?
I move to approve.
Thank you.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, if there are none?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the motion passes, all approved? 8C?
Is it also you, Station?
No, that's Dr. McGinnis.
That was me. I'll go ahead. So the CSIP was presented at the work session. We made just a couple of minor tweaks. So one of them was a goal that we had reading proficiency, and we also had a chronic absenteeism piece that was all combined into one goal, and we broke that up into two separate goals. So there's a reading proficiency goal. We also drilled that down to grades K through eight, or sorry, K through three. And then we took out the chronic absenteeism and made that a separate goal, just to have those two separate focuses, and that's all in alignment with Senate Bill 681. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, if there are none, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes, all approved?
Yes, negative. There we are. All right, this is for a change order on the roof project at Lindbergh Elementary. What this is, is to remove the cupula on top of the building, which is the giant center mass that sticks above. Originally, when that building was built, that is designed for air intake into the building with the original old house air fan systems, which are all no longer used and abandoned. The reason I'm coming with this change order is, once we got access to get up to it in the past, due to the sh- or due to the slate shingles, we've not been able to get to it. Once we got up there, it's made of wood, you can put your hand through it, it's very soft and rotten.
Kate, you talk as loud as you can. I still can't hardly hear you.
Can we start over or you get?
No, I'm, just keep going.
So this is removal of the cupula. Now, the, the very top of it was very soft and rotten. So we, we went ahead to move forward with the removal of it. Currently, they are in- we went ahead to move forward with the removal of it, currently, they are in the process of adding all of the scaffolding, which is a large amount of the cost, to remove the cupula is about, it is thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. This also includes all of the material that, to, it's put new rafters in underneath it, but ultimately, the cost to refurbish, to replace it, exceeds that amount tremendously. So this is to remove it, we'll re-sheet over it once we're done, and shingle right over top of it, and it will no longer be there.
So I hear you say, this is a cost-effective time to do it, is it necessary to do it?
It is very necessary to do it.
Well, then, I make the motion, we approve.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Whose second is it?
Whitney.
No, you're good. All right, I have a motion and a second, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes, all approved?
Okay. I had sent all of you the MSBA policy revisions and updates about a month ago, hopefully you all looked at them, there were minor changes to some of them, mostly updates on the address of her district building, but other than that, everything else, the administration said they all looked fine, so, I'm here to present them for a motion to approve.
I move. I have a motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes, all approved? Mr. Kearl?
I think that was yours.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, you asked for it to be held.
Oh, yeah. Um, I had asked, it's got Mark's name on it. I thought he was gonna speak to it, too. Oh, no, you're fine. At the beginning of the month, I had attended a meeting with NEA, admin, and MS TA, and I know that there were concerns about, about the policy, about the bereavement policy, just about, if I remember correctly, if the staff attends a funeral of a student on behalf of the district or their building, and then also adding a niece or a nephew in the policy. I know that already in the school year, that the staffs attended a funeral of a couple of our students, and they've used their own time in order to do so, on behalf of the district, and I know that that was a concern of theirs, and so, I was asked if I could bring this to the board as an informational item, as a possibility of a revision. Am I missing anything from that conversation, Mr. Kearl, or Dr. McGinnis?
No.
What do you guys think about that?
I wonder if we could table that tonight, one, it's a little hard to hear, and secondly, I think we're all getting tired, and we just take that at one of the future times we're together. I make a motion to table it.
Well, because it's an informational item, it doesn't, it doesn't need a motion, anything like that.
If it's not gonna take a vote, I'm okay with it.
Just, if you're just able to look at the information, because I know that it was really, it was really a big deal, you know, to them, and so I would like us-
And is there a recommendation on the change to it?
Yes, in order to add niece or nephew as your excuse, because if you look at the policy, it's like, it's your immediate family, and we revised it a year or two ago, you know, to include like an aunt or an uncle, and they're asking to include like, a niece or nephew also to the policy, and then, to get an idea of a way to approve a leave if a member of the district attends the funeral of a student.
So I still, I still kinda support a table of this, because I would, I would like to talk about it more fully.
Right. And then we could also ask them to come and speak.
Well, and, and, and I don't even, yeah, sure, if they want to, but I do think that if we have a student that passes away, we should not be rigid in how we allow them to leave, and I think they're adults, they can, you know, at the building level, you know, they can determine how that happens, I know, I've had that happen, it should be rare, I think it is rather rare, but we have a very large district, so I think if we can accommodate those staff as much as possible, I'd like to see us do that, but I do think being able to talk about it at the next meeting, I would like to do.
Perfect. If everyone's okay with that, we can move on? Okay, the next one are the board notes, again, it's late, and we still have closed, I know a lot of us attended a conference over the weekend, and we can get into that later, I haven't even looked at my notes, anything like that, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, too, I'm really anxious to hear about your session you did, but, again, well, another time.
Yes. Okay, cool. Future meetings are listed on the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn into executive session? Yes.
Yes, I make that motion.
Go ahead, read it, Tom.
I need you to read the little-
Oh, then I don't make it. No, I'm just kidding, I will. Adjourn to executive session pursuant to 610.021, closed meetings and closed records for one legal, three hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting of particular employees, and thirteen individually identifiable personal records.
The motion, is there, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Sorry, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Well, this meeting is adjourned. Ten oh three-